405. Please sign off your form and attend to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
No, I don't have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Have a second?
A second.
Would you make a second or a favor?
Aye.
Going to over this nuisance officer. We were getting, I think, next month, start on our budget process. And talking with Michelle about if it's an idea to go ahead and budget for a nuisance officer. We do need one, not whether we can or not, but we definitely need it. And figuring out what the total charges that we're gonna have come up with and budget that in there.
Do you have an idea of what, what kind of amount we need across? Thank you.
So I sent you guys an email with the, with the bend, city of Bend, Officer One and Officer Two. And I sent those in an email to you.
Okay, I forwarded it to them, but can I do that again?
I can't remember what the starting wage was. Of course, that's Bend, and so we can put our own in, but I just kinda wanted to give, I think we're gonna use the bends, a lot of the bends ordinances that we would close, what their pay was. And so I think, I think the number one, just right offhand, is like at, starting at fifty-seven thousand, went to seventy. And, um, that's wages, that's not the benefit package.
And that would be a county employee by definition, right? Some county benefits.
And so when I came last time, I was seeing, since the town of Lakeview on the south end has most of the nuisance problems, which is down on the wrong side of the county. And so I asked the city if we can partner.
Yeah, I was on the phone.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I did hear. Do you think that the, um, Anne can give us a estimate of what a county employee's benefits?
So, with everything, it's usually right around a hundred grand.
Okay.
All of them, you know, about thirty-five percent of the wages, thirty-five to forty percent of the wages is what they're paying. Cause you'd have furs and everything. A lot of that south end you're talking about is actually in the county and not in the city.
Yeah, that's what he's talking, yeah.
The, but the most of the south end complaints are in the city.
Really?
Yeah.
Beyond, you're not talking about beyond Ninth Street?
Well, I kinda forgot about Ninth Street. But Ninth Street's a cut off, like, we have T Street over here that's got some problems right now and yeah, so. I forgot about the Ninth.
Yeah, and Ninth, Ninth Street's a cut off. There is some some little patchy areas, I think, down through there. Annexed in. But it's not a full annexed, annexation.
Everything's south of mine.
Not all of it.
Not all of it.
Most of it, yeah, but most of it was.
Yeah.
So.
Will I give this number to work with?
Yeah. Kate, do you have anything more on that, Mark?
And so what I was just requesting is whatever the number, what we'll do is if you guys decide that you wanna partner with us, we'll have another work session at the county, knock out the details that we wanna do, and then just split it.
We need to make sure that the ordinances line up so that the.
Yeah, Donna gave me a copy of your guys' ordinance. And what we'll do too is I have the book on the international nuisance ordinance. And then I emailed you a copy of the Bend's one. And so what I'm thinking is, is that if we could both be on the Bend one, what we want on there, or don't want on there, we cross off and then just go.
One of the biggest things that we gotta nail down is the cost, because with water filtration plant and the Martin project and the stuff we're doing for our, our budget stretch this year.
We're the same way, yeah. So if we can't partner up, we virtually can't do.
We're the same thing. We want, we want the same thing the county does. We wanna be able to forward with this. But we also have to be able to sustain it just like the county does. So we, you know, we really need to look at the cost and get some hard, fast numbers of what our total cost is gonna be to make sure when we start a budgeting this year, which we're gonna be doing pretty soon, that we can get it in there and sustain it.
I would recommend you guys also pull Medford's ordinance. They adopted one of the most recent, one of the international, or the nationwide model ordinances for nuisance surveillance, stuff because of all of the homes that were in foreclosure, things like that, you know, forwarded windows, things of that nature. So that is another source. That was a, they actually presented at one of the Oregon Attorneys, Municipal Attorneys Association, whatever. So they did it fairly recently, and that's a decent resource. Their city manager had to deal with that quite a bit, about what they're doing, whatever, kinda what they're running for cost and things of that nature. So that would be another one. But remember too, that the one thing you're gonna have to feel careful with is, again, county's gonna have certain concerns in certain ways, and city has different ones just because of the.
Yeah, we'll have to work.
There's a lot of harmonization and stuff, so I would assume a lot of work sessions, a lot of things to harmonize, which will.
Then the biggest thing, and I think Mark will agree with me, is we have to be able to stand, the county's got a ton of stuff going on because of down there. We have to be able to sustain that, because the last thing we wanna do is hire somebody, get them in a role, and have to live on a year because we can't maintain the budget, we can't maintain the cost. And we need to do that before we go to the, to the ordinance.
I think it's kind of like one of those things we never really wanna do, but we have to do it. I don't think, I mean, I know we need to sustain it. I think there'll be some growing pains through it about what kind of revenue we're bringing in, but I think it's one of those top priorities above and beyond some of the other things because of the fact that the lack of the officer is causing us significant problems. We may not see the revenue financially, but we're gonna see an overall turnaround in years, and it will take years. But I would like to see the cohesion happen more with urban growth boundary than county and town. Because the urban growth boundary kind of keeps you within that town appearance. There's a lot of places that we've gone in our department today that, you know, is county, town, county, town, county. And they're all within the urban growth boundary, and nobody knows its next door neighbor is county, however, it appears to be in town. So we need to have a consistency there, and what I'd like to see. And we'll have to map out the cost of, and how much each, each section is, is given. So if we're paying fifty percent, we would expect fifty percent of the work to be in the town limits or urban growth boundaries.
So, just if I can, I went based off my air quality applications and had found some of those. And some of the ones that are in the county are still county, and the ones that are in the city are still city people. So the south end, it won't be too bad to find out where that urban growth boundary is, because I didn't throw those out.
We have it. Right there.
That's.
Yeah, but then you've got some that are catty, want us in between those.
Okay.
So it's, it's almost like a maze, yeah.
Yeah, but the thing is, is that if we start having to do the boundaries, then you're going to add all this extra work, and it's just like.
That's why the ordinance needs to be similar across the board, so there's no issue.
Right.
I just don't.
And I don't, I don't think the ordinances are gonna be a problem. The, well, the main problem is, number one, we don't have a nuisance officer.
Right.
Somebody to stay on top of it. Number two is neither one of us, the town or the county, have any teeth in getting this done. We send letters, send letters, send letters. And we have to change the way we fine them, turn them over to collections, put a lien on their place, blah, blah, blah.
A fifty dollar fine.
And alls it's gonna take is one or two of those, and people are gonna say, they need business. If they ask us to clean the place, we clean. And since we're talking about finances real quickly, um, so Senator Finley called me, I don't remember which day it was, um, and asked the, for me to get information from the town on contracts that you guys have with Warner Correctional to see, because we're trying to get a bill passed where the county's gonna take over the prison if they close it. But we want this town to receive compensation for lost revenue. And so, um, I got some of this stuff from you guys, which is the, um, how many million BTUs you use on a monthly basis. Is there, is, I guess this would be a question to Jeff, is that public information if we've received a few of their bills? I believe.
So sorry.
I believe the con, the contract itself is public information. I don't know about their monthly bill from day to day, with them being government, it's probably.
You can't even give that word to residents, for previous resident, I know, because of.
Well, you can if they're buying it. They can get past these bills.
But it's, all of the contracts between the town and Warner Correctional, so get copies of that.
Right, and so if I could get the copies of your guys' sewer, water, and I have the contract with the geothermal, but I don't have like a bill, an actual bill. And so what I'm trying to do with Senator Finley is like get enough revenue for a year, or two years, or whatever we can get for the town. You know, because that's a substantial amount of money, you know, we're knocking on two hundred grand with everything, a year. And if we can get a year or two of that back, and so I need that as soon as I can get it, so I can get it to Finley. And I thank you guys for all the work, connecting for every time.
No, well, I'll go get it right now.
I think probably the easiest, probably the safest way for you guys to give it to them is to give not the bill, but what we've got, received an actual revenue from financial, or that actually, because our financials are public record of that money, so that would be the way.
And that, that would be fine.
Accounts receivable.
But the, accounts receivable for Warner Creek, okay, up there for water and sewer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that the only thing?
That, that was all I had on this.
May I ask a question? About this ordinance, Stafford? Can I? Can I go ahead? What I wanted to ask is before, when we've been all discussing this or whatever, uh, it came up that when we have an ordinance officer dealing with animal issues, when the tickets are given and the money is paid, for some reason it goes away to the state for two years, and then comes back to us. Is that the same when you're writing tickets on properties and stuff here?
I know the dog issued state law.
You know what I mean? I'm just asking the part about the money going away for two years and coming back.
I don't.
You go to civil court, which has its process. That's where we gotta work it out, because we don't have a civil court, so we have.
But, but the city, or, excuse me, I went to the court to make sure that they would handle these.
Okay.
And they will, and so.
And for us, they already do, or if we do try to prosecute one of them, they already still do handle all of them.
So her question is on funding, that's up to, it's gonna be up to the court, I don't know.
It is as far as if it's violation of state law, there's a revenue sharing formula fairly complicated. Like a dog running a lard, state law is that particular. If it is a local violation, then it's a different issue, is that, that, that's our fine at that point. But when it is, when you're citing somebody under a state law issue, the fine, a certain percentage of the fines in certain places, if they don't want there to be that perverse incentive, you're citing people to raise revenue. Where you're running like speed traps and stuff like that, that's kinda the idea behind some of those, so that's kinda how those work. But when it comes to like a development code violation, or a local nuisance violation, that money stays within the municipal, whatever jurisdiction is.
So we would need, the county would have an agreement with court on a process, and I assume timeline.
I don't know the legal stuff, so I can't.
Well, that's what we'll have to get into. I would imagine there's gonna be.
I, I can ask them, but I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I, I think, I would imagine they're gonna require some type of agreement, or we're gonna, I mean, we have to pay for the process of somebody processing the fines. So we're gonna have to come up with an agreement with that, because I would assume.
The, one of the problems with us was, is they would bring, like, an appeal. Like, if a landowner appealed it, they'd appeal it to the county commissioners. Well, if you go to the county commissioner, that this is one of your constituents, how do you think they're gonna handle it? I don't wanna see any of these cases. I want it to be.
It should be handled before.
Right. You have a chance to clean up your property, to hear your court, uh, your appeal in court, or your plea in court, and then it's either turned over to collections if they don't pay the court, or we put a lien on them legally on their property.
And the court's not gonna do the lien process, folks, so you're still, at least for us, we're still gonna have to have the town council, you know, as manager of town council, and then of course, the, the circuit court has been the appellate thing for some of those. But the lien mechanism isn't something the court does, because that's a function of our ordinance.
But they approved the collection company that puts the lien.
Not necessarily, no. We actually impose the lien and it becomes a property tax issue.
So more than likely, when it gets to that point, it would go to Dave Knowles' successor, correct?
That's correct. Once it's, once it's fully finalized, that can't be appealing for, that is how one of them works, and then it's just like, or it goes in, it's just a judgment against the property, and then that's foreclosed. So sometimes it's the property tax, sometimes it's done as, and you kinda have to be careful with some of the property tax stuff, because you have to be careful it doesn't put you subject, that's why we don't, um, on water accounts, lien the properties, because Jacksonville tried that, and their entire water rate structure became subject to the Oregon tax court. So that's.
Which we should, which puts them at illegal tax rates, things like that. I mean, it's not like they're saying our, if we had our water rates, because does not Bend do liens on the property and Medford?
There are some jurisdictions that have and still take that risk. Majority of the other municipal attorneys, especially after that Jacksonville case, have taken the thing that you do it through a small claims process or collection process and don't lien underwater in sewer bills. These kinda liens are, I think, a little, they're perfect, you have to be really careful you don't crop into where it seems like a property tax issue, because you can end up with your entire fine structure subject to court appeals, of the tax court jurisdiction, which then subjects you to all of those property tax limitations and oppression and other stuff like that. There's some disagreement around the state on it, but more conservative approach, and honestly, I've talked to enough attorneys, including one of the attorneys that used to represent Jacksonville when that happened. You do not wanna be in the tax court, because they could post some rules on some of your stuff that makes, it, it, it ends up costing more, it defeats the whole purpose of what you're doing, so.
We definitely need to look at towns that are successful in cleaning up the community.
Correct.
I, I believe Bend is extremely successful, like Sisters, Medford, Clamette.
Correct.
You know, maybe Jacksonville wasn't, I don't know, so we won't look at Jacksonville's.
Right, and again, that was typically water sewer. I'm just telling you, you wanna keep the fine, and a lot too, you wanna keep the fine as more of an, as a municipal or county level penalty, so you're not getting into some of these really complicated. Because again, your enforcement mechanism has to have, can't cost you more than what it's actually worth to propose it.
But we'll definitely work, it, it, there's a lot of work into it.
Correct.
That is something we need to look at.
It's not gonna be a money-making deal regardless, but it's gonna clean up the town. It's to a point, you might be surprised, again, it's not a money-making deal, but what it more is, usually where you get into the bigger issues is when most ordinances have, you know, a daily fine or stuff like that, but some people don't even care, because again, they're low income, judgment proof, et cetera. Where it turns into the issue and is when you decide to go, you know what, we're not gonna put up with this anymore, we're cleaning it up and we're assessing cleanup costs against the property. That's your bigger handle. The issue with that is, do you really wanna get stuck with that property? So it's a, you put, there is a lot of tools, you put in your arsenal, fines, cleanup cost assessments, all of that, and you use the one that's most appropriate in the situation. Just because you have the ability to do this, you particularly use it on this property. Versus if you've got a property that's a stop law that actually has, property has value or something like that, then you go into.
But just like the fear of, we, worst case scenario, Jacksonville should not stop us from doing this.
I'm not, I'm not telling you worst case scenario, I'm just telling you that it has been, it, it, it isn't just a fear, it has been a major concern and a major if a majority of city, a majority of the smaller city attorneys on the east side of the mountains have taken that approach due to the fact of what happened there, because of Oregon's, some of the citizen ballot measures were written more broadly than what they should have been. So it's just something you gotta be really careful about, and tend to, and careful about how you do it, so.
The thing is though, there's gonna be some properties that if we have to clean them up, the cost is gonna be more than the property's worth, and that's just the way it's gonna be.
Correct.
But the problem, the, the good part about that is we have to forge through it and work through it anyways, and then word gets around, you know how it is around here. When you see somebody lose their property because they kept it a pigsty, the next guy's gonna think twice about it.
And that, and that greater, greater concern for me is the safety of firefighters who are having to deal with some of these properties quite often, and, and when somebody ends up losing their life because somebody's storing unsafe conditions for public workers out there, um, that to me is more important, so I think if we're moving ahead here, for sure.
Kate, was there anything else?
If, if we put rented, uh, the big dumpsters and put them down in alleyways, would people use the dumpster to fill their waste up? I mean, it's minor compared to what he's talking about, because we're talking about more minor stuff, more fire stuff.
I don't know that some of the issues are rather large. I mean, we're talking appliances and cars and.
And I know, I know that we've done that before, and it was pretty success, successful, but
we wanna get rid of the minor stuff, something that people can physically hold their hands and put in. As we're talking about fire, a lot of fire things, you know, I'm trimming down some of these back alleys, and there's a lot of things, if there's a fire, a lot of people, people just throw a lot of damn trash out.
Yeah, that's, and that's one of the issues we need to address.
I just, wonder, what would be the cost of, of doing that, putting down one of those big dumpsters down each alley?
So, playing devil's advocate, my other thought process, like, I think that's a great idea. Would it make people pour their, their items until the annual dumpster availability is another thought on that?
And then somebody's gonna pick up the cost of landfill fees and.
Who's gonna pay the dump fee?
Right. Everybody's just gonna go there and stick one to the dump and pay the fee.
I mean, I think, I think it's a great idea, and I'd love to see a way to.
Put it in here for a week.
Who's gonna pay to dump it?
Huh?
Who's gonna pay to dump it? The town, the county, both?
I mean, it kinda makes you wonder what's the root of the problem. Is it a problem that people don't have ability to take it to the dump? I don't know that that's the problem.
I think a lot of people have pickup trucks, or are friendly with a pickup truck, so they just stash it back.
Part of the problem is, everybody knows nothing's gonna happen to them.
And I think.
And we all know this.
Right.
You know what I mean? Literally, if you've got stuff stacking up and you keep getting letters from you guys, yeah, the world's gonna be a little bit different, but nothing happens at the end of the day. Same thing with animals. It's why people just let it keep going on.
Nothing will happen until we get an ordinance officer in there.
I agree.
And to make it happen.
I agree, and like he said, once people start losing their stuff and paying fines, they'll pay attention.
I think that maybe the idea of doing something after we've put the ordinance officer in effect, and then having days where we have community cleanup. But you know, one of the things I'd like to see, not only do people take care of their own property, but maybe help somebody else out, or encourage somebody to clean it up the sidewalk, you know, business owners sweeping off the sidewalk. That is something they should be doing, you know, um, sweeping off the sidewalk in front of your house. If we could put something in place maybe down the road, where it'd be like a paint drop off some.
Right, but the, the thing is, you know, the, like sidewalks, you know, if the city put it in, or you put it in, you have to maintain it.
Yeah.
People aren't doing that in some areas.
You know, like maybe the hazardous paint drop off, that, I know there's some towns that do a paint drop off.
County does it. I think out the county shop once in a while, or tires.
We did last year.
Tires would be a good one.
We had a paint one last year.
Yeah.
The, the dump thing's.
I remember a few years ago, we had a tire one.
A tire one would be good.
My, my dad was still alive then, and we filled up four of those big.
Well, I've been in them, and they have like a week, a week free at the dump. So anybody could bring stuff out there and dump it, so the city's not involved.
The thing is though, that is a lot for the county to bear. That's a big cost. And we only have a certain amount of years in that landfill, and so I damn sure want somebody that's paying for it. And so I, I get where you go.
Well, even if you had a free place to dump leaves and branches and that kinda stuff. We don't have any.
But then are, are we gonna have somebody watching it, so that people aren't throwing garbage underneath the leaves? Because you know how it is.
There's always those that abuse the system. Yeah, I think it's one of those things where we can think about what kinda service we can give back after we place an ordinance officer in effect, and see where we're at on it.
And that's, that's the first thing we gotta do, is get the ordinance out.
Yeah, I, I really believe, like Brown was saying, once you have somebody charging them, it, it'll change, and it's gonna, word, word amounts and ups and downs, you know, this is.
Well, word will get out real quick.
Yeah.
I can't wait.
We'll stick Mama Cat on them.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I think we've pretty much covered that.
Do you have a timeline of when you would like to see this come to a conclusion, like with the?
Well, our timeline is, it's gotta be before budget hearings in May.
Okay.
So we can budget for our end of it. And so, what I, just thinking out loud, my mind was, let's get these guys on board. If they wanna be on board, then we'll have a work session with all of us together. Mainly just finding out the, the, writing the resume, the, the job description, how much it pays, and their benefit package. So we know exactly, both the town and the county know what it's gonna cost us. And then we'll just work through the, and have a mutual ordinance between the county and the town.
Now, you talk on one, one officer and two. One.
We can do two, we can do one all together. Why doesn't the town get the first one?
Okay, we'll just run on that.
Thank you so much.
Thank, thank you.
Yeah, and so we'll just meet, if you guys, as a town, we could probably try to get, um, a little gal from Bend, Julie Little, back down here. And.
Love it, great.
And she can fill us in on what works, what doesn't work, and we can go from there.
That, that'd be good.
And so. We, I can try to get her down here, you know, during a work session with the docs, and so we can all meet and go for it.
Kate, Jeff?
I was just curious, I don't think you were in office at the time, Mark, but the county had an ordinance officer in place about two years ago, very short-lived. Nobody really heard why the thing didn't, was it just not financially sustainable? Did something particular happen? Why did that cease?
I, I don't wanna say because there was some other legal stuff.
Okay.
But yes, um, and is those legal issues still happening now? Would we have the same legal issues? I never heard, I never had any idea, so I, I wasn't sure. I knew there was one in place for. I also, yeah, with the fake piece guy is, we're just getting on. I also didn't know what the fake news guy is, but just getting on. Coffee?
All right, we'll get ahold of you, set up me.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
You guys need me for anything else?
No.
I'm gonna go soon, so, so we can get that thing, and I'll let you guys know what he says.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. All right, one thing through.
Yes, thank you very much.
I did, I'm, I did a little research on that and I was told a contractor, you don't wanna put pitch roof on once and it costs more than the rubberized roof.
We'll do that.
We do that, yeah.
And so, but it said that the rubber, rubberized roof, rubberized roof, um, one that they put on over here is the DHS, um, is lifetime guaranteed.
I would like to see estimates on the cost difference in the long-term.
Well, from what Daryl emailed, it got thirty to forty thousand dollars.
Can we get something from somebody's professional in writing?
We can get all the endless roofing over there and they will.
What's the long-term plans for that building though, because we're talking about trying to revamp that whole part. I mean, I don't wanna throw thirty or forty thousand dollars at a building that you might carry around.
That building, I think, you're gonna sound.
Yeah, so here's a block building.
It's a block building.
But I, I mean, I don't know, it seems like we're gonna renovate that part, you know, that might be throwing good money towards bad if we're, you know, we're gonna do some repairs and updates and stuff. And I don't know, it was a forty thousand dollar job.
Well, all right, no, my main concern is getting the weight of the building.
And everything, whether you renovation-wise would be under the roof, not remodeling as in adding or extending, is that kind of the idea? So everything we real work is under the, under the roof, right?
I talked to Jeff today and he said, we can get up inside there and check the inside roof instead of maybe not really having to strip it, but the, the professional roofer will tell you you probably have to strip it and you may not, but you gotta have the all the rocks off of it and everything.
Uh, can I illuminate this a little bit? So I just talked to Daryl about this roof, um, we will have to strip or we should strip it regardless of, of if you actually needed to technically strip it because we have a lot of concern that there is rot in that deck. Uh, and so theoretically, when we pull off that old roof, it'll lessen the weight so we can do a really good thorough inspection of that deck, potentially repairing whatever we need. And so at your last Monday meeting, twenty-nine hu, or twenty-nine thousand was the price for the roof, but then when you add in flashing plus or minus the amount of deck that will need to be replaced because it is rotted out, that brings us to potentially forty thousand. And so there's some variability involved in that because we don't know if that deck needs to be replaced, we don't know how much of it will need to be replaced until we tear the roof off.
What about an inspection from the inside, because you can easily get up into the rafters from inside the building.
Yeah, well, at this point, it's not the roof issue, it's the deck.
You can see the claws on the deck.
I, that, talked to Daryl for more, that, that's, that's outside, uh huh.
The deck, as in the roof rafters or the sheeting?
He just wrote deck, just told me.
Is that on the flat only, correct?
Yes, as far as I'm aware.
We'd like to have a professional come in and do an inspection so we really know what we're dealing with.
Yeah, because they're not gonna come and put a lifetime guaranteed roof on the building if it's not gonna hold up.
Now, and you also don't wanna spend all this money on a lifetime guaranteed roof if a year later, somebody's foot falls through the deck because it's a rotted board or we get, you know, supports or beams collapsing from the bottom of the building.
Right.
Because the deck's messed up.
But I, I mean, I agree with Jeff, I think we need to have a roofer that does this for a living coming in and doing inspection on that roof and tell us what we need to do.
And we have like two areas that are leaking right now, so there's actually another option. If we're not in a position, we're gonna put in for more grants later, if we're not in a position to spend forty thousand dollars on it, get a professional roofer over here and patch the thing, we may get seven more years on it.
I think even if there's a little bit of cost to have an inspection done, Jeff, I agree, I think we need to have a new roofer.
Yeah.
That deals with this daily.
That would be my first step, we need to know how big of a mess we're dealing with.
We can take some panels out, we can sit them up into the rafter and seal at the bottom of the.
That's just sheeting, that's a TBR ceiling, right? So they can get in there pretty easily. Oh yeah, so why don't we try to find a roofer that would be willing to come over?
Any areas that are leaking right now, I'm sure there's gonna be at least some sheeting damage in that area, so.
Let's see if we can contact a roofer from Ben, Ben Medford or Clamette Falls, other areas.
Hendris and Clamette Falls.
I have experience with both types of roofs, yeah.
Why don't you call Carter, why don't you call Carter and see who did the school roofs?
Right, that'd be good.
They did a nice job on those, that's that rubber icing up.
Rob knows who did the DHS building.
Yeah, he did, I think it was Hendris Roofing.
Hendris is the only one in Clamette that I know of, because they did, they did repairs on my building as well with TPO and they're the only ones I think that are doing or willing to come over here from Clamette, so if you're really interested in Hendris about it, remember though, just because somebody inspects it, this is still something that obviously still has to be put out.
Oh yeah, yeah.
But, but again, getting, but, but there's no issues, you guys have no issues with getting an inspection of what your school bid is gonna be, that's, that's just utilities.
Jeff, can you, can you contract him to see Ben while we're doing inspection?
Sure.
And let me know what day they're gonna be here, because I'd like to be there and I got how to get it off. What days are better for you to be at? Uh, right now, before April first, uh, any time in the afternoons, but I can get a day off after April first, I'm off on Fridays.
Okay.
I go to four tins on April first.
But we need it way before that, right?
But you might not get it before that, you gotta remember, this is first.
You might need to call around then.
This is the first of March and these days are usually busy in the late night, six months.
Well, that's me. But we need to call and find.
Try to make it in the afternoon and on a Friday, it'll hopefully.
But if we can't get them, we need to call around and find somebody who's available too.
I bet they're fine with Ben.
Probably.
They believe, yeah, they're a wildfire, so.
Maybe, yeah.
So yeah, see, see if you can find and do the roof inspection and let, let's have that spec there and see. So we're not spending good money.
Yeah.
On a, on a bad project, we've done enough of that.
Michelle, do you have anything to add to this?
Um, I think the inspection is a great idea, because then you know what you're dealing with and then if you want to, we can take some of the money that we've had budgeted to repair the roof and save it towards a pitched roof, um, if you wanna do that. If the flat membrane roof is what you guys want, then we can move with that, but until you know.
Until you have inspection, we don't know which way to go.
Right, but you can't have that option.
So let's just start with the inspection and then like the determination from there what direction we need to go.
Yeah, because if it's gonna be forty, you might as well save it and get a pitched roof for the, you know, just budget and save your money to get what you really, really want, or maybe it's a flat roof, I don't know. But that's just what I was.
Maybe we could spend three thousand dollars and get by with the patch for a few more years. Yeah, let's, let's just get, let's get an inspection done.
And so, uh, because we weren't awarded the seven hundred fifty thousand, I asked the committee for feedback as to why they decided not to award us that so that we can come back around this, this season and really get our foot in the door better because I just don't know what they were bringing up, I know it was highly competitive. Um, so we can continue to do that, I'm looking for other grants, like there's pool safety grants, there's a bunch of other stuff, so I'm gonna keep going to see if we can't get little by little. Um, still haven't given enough on revamping everything.
Maybe you could give us a ballpark too on, uh, just repairing certain of all these looking at. We bet. Okay, so we'll just put that aside and go get an inspection done.
I would request though, guys, that with the inspections you guys do, whatever scope that is, make sure you ask the question, okay, we do this patch work, but is this gonna be such a Band-Aid? You know, in other words, make sure, say, don't go, you know, make sure you're really honest with, when you guys are talking with inspector that you guys want the truth of where this thing is at, so you're not doing something where you gotta end up with a bigger problem, well, yeah, we use Band-Aid, it's gonna last you six months or one major snowball.
Yeah, we, we'll get an honest assessment of what we need to do and we'll go forward from there.
I'll be out daily, yeah.
We need a consensus on that here.
Uh, yeah, I do. You all agree?
Yeah.
Okay, you have consensus on that? All right, let's move on down to the water rates, I do see Michelle's giving me all kinds of paperwork. I'm gonna turn, I was actually the best thing, just turn it over to Michelle, she'll tell you what you come up with.
Okay, so this one with the little green tab is, um, from the city of Independence, but what we're really looking for is the, uh, Public Works and their charges there, which is why it's been marked for you. Um, and then I got water rates from Medford, I know that they're a much larger town, but, um, it's always good to take a look at what other cities are doing in our neck of the woods. This one right here is from, uh, Clamette Falls, the one that says water rates at the, at the top. That one's from Clamette Falls and then this one is ours. So, what, what I would like to do is, if you look at Clamette Falls, their rate increase was one point four percent CPI effective January first. I think we should look towards doing the same because we've never done a CPI increase. Um, and that we affected April first to a one point five CPI increase for just water and sewer, which will probably be less than a dollar for most people. Um, and then for the next six months, we come to an agreement with what you wanna raise our rates to for the water treatment facilities. That way it gives me time to go out into the community and get feedback of what other people are thinking, what other groups are thinking, how the community is feeling while we discuss what you would like to have as a water rate increase.
The, the water rate increase for the water plant would be dictated by what USDA says what we have to do for conditions of long term.
I, I think so.
That's what they've been telling us all along, is that it's gonna be dictated by what the state averages, because we're all around the world, the state average.
We haven't heard any feedback from USDA, I don't know where our application is on that.